Oh, I must be on a slow process here. Now it did. It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before I ask for an open forum, I am going to read a proclamation for Sheila Mockros, who has worked for the city of Wake Park for approximately seventeen years, and has decided to retire at the end of this month, so. Proclamation is declaring July thirty first, two thousand and eighteen, eighteen Sheila Mockros Day. Whereas employee Sheila Mockros has decided to retire after seventeen years of service to the city and residents of Wake Park. And whereas Sheila Mockros is a city historian, she remembers and knows so many things that have happened over the years, and can even find the documents to prove it. Whether it be assessments on street projects, or the owner's history of her property from way back, Sheila knows the history of this community well, and she has lived and worked here for many years. And whereas Sheila Mockros will no longer need to send rental license renewal letters, handle public hearing notices, or follow up on a property owner complaint against neighbors. And whereas Sheila Mockros will now be able to relinquish her duties as a citizen complaint resolver, going to great lengths to resolve issues citizens have with the city, her minute taking of planning commission meetings, and all election duties. And whereas Sheila Mockros will now be able to enjoy her grandkids more, enjoying the Gold Wing Club, or on more motorcycle trips with her husband Brad. And whereas Sheila Mockros will be able to enjoy her retirement with her family, day walking instead of night walking, and more lunches with her friends. And whereas the city of Wake Park employees will miss Sheila, her care and concern for the public, her willingness to always help someone in need, her commitment and dedication to the city of Wake Park. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard D. Miller, Mayor of the city of Wake Park, Minnesota, do hereby declare Tuesday, July thirty first, two thousand and eighteen, be proclaimed as Sheila Mockros Day in the city of Wake Park. Encourage all residents and employees to wish Sheila Mockros a happy retirement. On behalf of the city, I'd like to thank her for all her time, and I don't see her here, so she's probably enjoying some of it already. Oh, she was off today. Alright, is there anyone here for the two-minute open forum?
Yeah, we're here. We've heard through the scuttlebutt that these south bathrooms are down here, were supposed to be dismantled. And the reason why we, as neighbors on Thirteenth Avenue, don't feel that they should be dismantled, they should be left in service, for the simple reason that the amount of use that they get. We see all the kids playing while there and the whole show. And on holidays, they roof up on pipe, how much is being used. And the bathrooms are being used at that time. And even though they're not handicap accessible, a sign indicating where the handicap accessible are at would be all that would be required. So if it's a council decision to dismantle those bathrooms, or to leave them in place, we would appreciate having them left as is.
It's interesting you said that. We just had a work session, we talked about that. We are gonna leave, I think both of them, we're not gonna take any of them down this year, or replace any of them this year. I think we're gonna leave, we are gonna remove, when I say remove, that's not the right word. We're gonna redo the one further down. Replace that one with a bigger bathroom that's gonna look like the pavilion that's down there, kinda fit into the surroundings. We're gonna redo that one, make it bigger, get some family restrooms with that too, so they have those changing rooms for kids, and bigger. And we also have not approved or denied leaving that south one yet. So that's still on the agenda, and I think we're gonna leave that till next year to make that decision.
Well, I guess, I'm just, we're here, as I say, as neighbors, on Thirteenth Avenue, and indicating how much is being used. I'm not complaining about the trailer dump being removed, because you already have taken care of that.
Yeah.
But it's been up, the ADA, EDA, I understand there's not enough room in them. But a sign on the door indicating where the handicap accessible is, should be all that's necessary.
Yeah.
So we're just here
Okay.
to see if they can't remain as is.
Alright.
They're here to stay for now.
A lot of little kids use those, because they're playing ball over there, and it's quite a run all the way down to the other end. You know how kids are, they wait till the last minute.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else for two minutes?
Good evening, Sean Blackburn. I wasn't unable to attend any of the information and meetings about the Lions Park. I would ask if you could use my two minutes, maybe to give me some summations, or whatever you might be able to share with us about the Lions Park meetings.
We can probably do better than that, Sean. We can, actually, the chief has got a, handed out a brochure, or a little pamphlet about the Lions Park over there at Angus Acres. That's the one you're talking about, the concerns over there. He has the minutes that were taken over there, and the responses, and he can give you a copy of that.
In addition to that, we are gonna be sending a letter out to the neighbors about looking at, we're looking at reopening up the basketball courts, and then putting some parameters around, making sure that things are being done correctly, and all people can play ball there. And if you want any more information, feel free to give myself or Dave a call. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else, two minutes? Anyone else, two minutes? Anyone else, two minutes? Alright, review and approve council agenda. I don't think there's any changes on it, so.
Move to approve as is.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda item, item A, approve fencing south lot adjacent to public works facility. Item B, resolution authorizing acceptance of bonding bill funding for Wake Park Amphitheater. Item C, approved donation request from Wake Park Senior Center from gambling funds. And item D, approve appointment for the administrative building and planning associate position.
Vote A.
Vote D?
A.
Oh, A.
You want D, Chuck?
Yep.
Alright, somebody wanna move to approve B and C?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll is passed unanimously. Item A, Frank?
I just polled it, because I don't wanna vote for it, so.
Oh, okay. Somebody wanna move to approve item A?
I'll move to approve item A.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Passes four to one. Item D, Chuck?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to forward a conditional job offer for the administrative assistant position here at city of Wake Park to Kayla Klein, a conditional job offer, pay grade four, step four. Included would be five days of sick leave, starting date approximately August sixth. And we would want to extend the current eligibility list until January thirty first of two thousand and eighteen.
Nineteen. Nineteen. Nineteen, I'm sorry.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Alright, regular agenda, agreement for private use of right-of-way for Crooked Pint Ale House.
Mayor Miller, this item actually came up during the redevelopment of the property into the Crooked Pint Ale House, which by coincidence is planning to open tomorrow, from my understanding. When they submitted the building permit, initially it didn't have what was later submitted separately as an outdoor patio area. During the review, we noted that a large portion of that proposed patio area is actually within the city right-of-way. They've got a pretty good stretch on the western side that walks and talks, basically like city, or like a private property. It's been long used as part of their parking lot. We did review this at a department head level meeting sometime back, and determined that it might be something we could look at for an allowance to encroach into the right-of-way with the patio, provided that we would have an agreement with the property owner operator, and that the city would be indemnified and insured against any accidents. With your packet is the proposed agreements, the applicant has noted they're accepting of that agreement. In fact, they've already obtained the necessary insurance documents, actually above and beyond our minimums that I recommended. Assuming approval of the agreement, we would continue on with the building permit review process. We do have some back and forth, usually on patio designs where there's alcohol served. So this doesn't authorize the construction at this time, but it would basically just allow the patio to go forth in that area. And there are some guidelines for monitoring and ensuring that everything lines up, and there's option to terminate for either party if it becomes necessary.
Alright, council got any questions, concerns?
I do. Would it be advisable to have some kind of an inclusion into this approval if it goes that way? Should the business ever change, and that becomes just a slab of concrete, and that is, you know, that is something that may be put in to be removed at the time, if it's not used, is that?
I was just looking, I thought we may have had something in there.
I didn't catch that.
If there's not, it's certainly easy enough to put in, it's not a major issue.
Mike? The applicant shall remove any improvements it has placed on their property upon cancellation of this agreement by either party.
Yeah, I guess it would be my interpretation that if that would fulfill that requirement, that basically if they would decide to terminate, then they would pull their stakes from it. They are trying to design it in such a way that they can essentially meet the building code requirements, but also remove it for the winter, because they don't want it to get overly beat up by the snow plowing. They're aware of that as an issue after we brought it up, so.
Okay.
We're coming to an agreement, I want the design to look like.
Council, anything else?
I guess my concern was having to do with the snow plowing, because you're putting it on the west side of the building there, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
According to what I'm seeing here, then on the other part of it, you're not very far from the curb at all.
No, it's not, they're.
And if they're gonna put this type, according to the picture, it looks kinda like almost a permanent type thing. Are those planters and so on movable away from the sidewalk?
Some of the, under the current design, and again, this has not been something that's cleared the building code side yet, because there are typically requirements associated with liquor service, that they have to come in from the building, that you can't access the patio from the outside. But you have to be able to exit the patio, it's what they call the panic hardware. That's something that's usually between the building code and the liquor licensing. But the intent is that the planters, if those are a component of it, that they would be removed for the winter months. The fencing, I believe, could take the brunt of the occasional snow blow, but the planters would, if they are something they proceed with, they would come down.
What fencing are we talking? Well, it's not on there. Not on here, I don't see, but even a fence would create a problem for snow blowing if you didn't take the fence down. Or snow removal.
Well, again.
It's not a fence, it's probably more of a railing. The picture they gave you is probably just something to give you a general idea of what they're thinking of.
Yeah, that's the extent of it right now, because we, right now, we've only addressed, or we're only addressing the ability to locate it in there, we're not really looking at the design per se. That's something that we'll have to address as the building permit review process continues. This is the first step. We don't wanna continue on with that process unless we get an okay that they can put it in there. Otherwise, they'll have to either forego it, or revise it to a point where it's scaled down enough that they could stay in their own property, and I don't know if at that scale, they'd proceed with it.
Another concern would be is, if we put that in, or allow it to go in, you'd be shutting off the sidewalk there during the summer months? Or is there enough room between this and the curb?
There's no sidewalk there.
There's no sidewalk.
No sidewalk there.
Nope, there's no sidewalk there currently.
There isn't?
It's just paved.
It's been used by Sammy's Pizza for years and years and years of parking.
In fact, the encroachment, it also extends down into the south, where there's some of the parking stalls encroached into what's actually city right-of-way. That was something that came up during their purchase of it. They asked if that was gonna pose an issue, and essentially said, no, but if we ever have to get in there, we'll do it. But we're not gonna be liable for any damages or anything. If we have to get in there and replace something, we'll do it, but we're not gonna pay for it.
And it's so close to the street, is there's going to be some kind of protection for patrons who are in there?
That's something I can't answer. It's at the applicant's discretion, I guess. If we allow them to do this, they're accepting the liability for anything that may happen. They don't seem to have a concern with it, though.
I think I read we are indemnified, right?
Yes. And we are named through the insurance documents that they've already submitted that we would require, but they actually got a little bit ahead of the game and submitted after we drafted this agreement and ran it by them. We are listed as a party to that, that if this were to go forward, they would go forward with that. And we require that before we give any, sign off on anything. So the actual patio you would see is likely to look a little bit different from this, because they haven't settled on that design yet. This is merely authorizing them to locate the patio in that area. You're not approving this design per se, this is just an example of what they submitted.
Counsel, your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Is that Mike? Vic?
Vic, opposed.
Alright. What else do we have? Here we go. Request of Jeff and Stacy Blonigan for rezoning and conditional use permit and variances on their property of Interstate ninety-four and Old Highway twenty-three.
Thanks again, Mayor Miller. This is, as you just mentioned, a three-component request. This is actually, the combination of them is to allow for the construction of three billboards. As you may recall, we recently updated the billboard corridor area to include the area adjacent to I ninety-four. And this is the first couple of those that we will see in that area, assuming it were to be approved. The rezoning of the property is actually proposed association to get it to split, to put the billboards on their own parcel. This would be going to the BPC two commercial classification, which lines up with our land use plan for that area and long-term business development. The area to be rezoned is noted in the survey drawing. This is a pretty good-sized parcel, it doesn't look like it on paper, but it is quite large. It's actually about twice as large as the minimum for the area. It's not being plotted at this time, rather, assuming these requests would be approved, the area would be administratively split from the remainder of the parcel. That is something that's allowable. A billboard is not considered a structure, since it's not meant for occupancy. You may recall the split after a proposed rezoning is similar to what we did for the solar facility in the area, as it wouldn't make a lot of sense for the owners to commit to the split until the rezoning would be approved. It goes concurrently. The conditional use permit and the variance, the conditional use permit is for the actual construction of the billboards themselves, or what we call a firm signage. They're located on the survey copy on the site plan, and they do meet the minimum one-thousand-foot distance requirements between them. You'd be looking at one digital billboard at the maximum size under ordinance. And that would be the middle location, and the proposed billboard on the outside would be static or just typical billboards with just the billboard faces changed periodically. They're all at or below the four-hundred-square-foot minimum. I should note that these proposed signs, unlike most billboard requests we get, they would be owned and operated by the applicants, so they would not be bound to a long-term lease, as is more typical with billboards. This gives them the benefit of some future flexibility in development, when that time comes without having to work around the locations. Basically, they're looking to kinda maximize some use of that property while they consider long-term growth options. But they are working with a professional billboard designer or construction team, so they're gonna look like any other billboard, it's just that they're not gonna be owned or operated by the handful of companies that own them in this area. The variance component is being requested due to the overhead lines. It's actually to allow for the bottom of the billboards to be placed lower than we typically require at ten-foot above grade, rather than the minimum twenty. Exceedingly rare that we ever get a request to go lower with something, so I'll note that. That's so they can avoid impeding the lines again. I recommended reducing the height to zero feet through the variance request, just in the event that there's some design considerations, which may want them to go lower than ten feet, even though they plan to put it at ten feet, rather than saying, we get out there, we look at it, and now something changed, and we have to go eight feet or seven feet versus ten. I wouldn't wanna have them come back and go through the process again, even though the intent is to install it at ten foot above. I do believe that there's practical difficulty present due to the XL lines over which the applicants have no control, and you really can't work around them. The planning commission reviewed all three requests at their, excuse me, that was last month's meeting, not July, and recommended approval of the requests without discussion or concern. So it has the planning commission's recommendation for approval as well.
Alright, council got any questions, concerns?
Yeah, and how far are the lines above the proposed signs?
Actually, Vic, I don't know that offhand, but I know the applicants are here, and they could probably speak better to that, because they've been working more closely through the design process. So I would defer to them in this case.
I can just have you give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Jep Blonigan, the address on it is, I don't believe.
You can give me your home address, or whatever address you use for residence.
Okay. Sixteen fifty West Saint Germain, Saint Cloud, Minnesota. As far as the height restraints, XL requires a forty-foot distance between the bottom of the wire, and that changes wherever you go, because the wire dips down and then comes back up. So that's why we're asking for the variances, is once we get out there, this whole design process also has to go to XL and get their approval and stamped, because we're putting them in their easement area. So, but there has to be a minimum for safety requirements, and their engineers have to sign off on all this as well.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions?
This is just east of twenty-three and ninety-four? The maps really don't show.
It would be, it would be to the east of twenty-three on I ninety-four. If you see where that borrow pit is there, up along the freeway, looks like a pond, that's where the digital would be. So the digital would actually overhang that water feature there, and then go approximately a thousand feet east, and that's where the other sign would be, and go about twelve hundred feet to the west, and that's where the other one would be.
Alright. Any other questions? Somebody wanna move to approve or deny the rezoning request?
Move to approve.
The rezoning request.
Yeah, 'cause there's three.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and somebody wanna move to approve or deny the conditional use permit?
Yes, I'll move to approve the conditional use permit with the, to include the recommendations one through five from staff.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and a motion from a council member to approve or deny the variance.
I'll move to approve the variance.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Yeah, where are we here? Here we go, got another one. Alright, item C. Variance request from Edwin and Brenda Molliter, a ground sign setback in height at six thirty-five, Twenty-Eighth Avenue South.
This request, staff is working with scenic sign on behalf of the applicants to increase the allowable sign height from twenty to thirty feet in Iowa Industrial area, and to reduce the setback from ten feet to zero feet. Again, this is six thirty-five, Twenty-Eighth Avenue South. The property is actually located immediately to the north of Seventh Street South, not too far from Rockon, is usually the most commonly referred to business in the area. As you see in the general location map, there's a pretty wide swath of public right-of-way along this section, which came to the attention of the owners and their sign contractor when they were looking at signage options. They don't currently have any form of ground sign. And they'd like to have one to provide guidance for their customers, to their location, is is pretty standard.
Yeah, I thought at first it was gonna, I didn't like the idea it was coming closer, but where it's at, I don't see any problem with it.
Yeah. And they actually are working with Rockon to kind of include both on that component. The distance is actually about a hundred and ten feet from the property line to the street. Usually for a sign installation, we'll be looking at twenty.
Right.
So I think this is something that makes sense. I think the thirty-foot height is reasonable, they are showing, demonstrating, I believe, practical difficulty. The thirty-foot is actually the standard now in most commercial areas, so they're not exceeding that. And the only reason we didn't change it in the industrial areas, because it really never became a, the question never came up. So we figured, why try to fix what seemed to be working?
Counsel, go ahead.
If this is thirty-foot, I know you mentioned here it's a new standard height for this, is this something we should probably look at to change and?
We could. I prefer to, rather than make incremental ordinance amendments for something like sign, where we're always kinda getting constant requests, I prefer to look at it every few years, and kinda put it in queue, and then we take a look at sign stuff, because signs are the most common request, or questions that we get. So I would put it in queue to look at when the time is right, and probably make that change.
Any other questions from council? Somebody wanna move to approve?
I'll move to approve the variance for a ground sign at a height not to exceed thirty feet, setback of zero feet from property line, in an I-one industrial district as proposed, to include the two staff recommendations, item one and two.
Second.
Further discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Opposed.
Four to one. Vic's opposed. Alright, item D, consider approving plans and specs for Rivers Edge Park improvements Phase Three, and authorize advertising for bids. Oh, we got the big boy here tonight, John.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I'm here for plan approval of Rivers Edge Park Phase Three. We are looking to go through the competitive bidding process for the base bid only. This kind of phasing plan and plan sheet shows three different sections that previously were considered alternates. Now we'll just kinda show them as future work, just so the contractor has kind of a reference point of some other work that may or may not happen in the future. But included in the plans for approval tonight is the base bid, which is the two baseball fields, the sewer and water work to get over to that building, the maintenance building with some restrooms there that's shown as that gray block. It also includes the concrete plaza kinda behind the two baseball fields, a little bit of reworking of the pond as we went through this permitting process, Sock River Watershed District. Actually, not necessarily with this phase, but if and when those parking lots get built, that pond needs to be expanded a little bit. We also need some of that dirt, we're short of dirt on this site to build these two baseball fields. So we think it makes sense to do that over excavation now, communicate with the Sock River Watershed District, so that they know that we're doing that in preparation for the parking, and side benefit is we can avoid hauling dirt to the site and use the on-hand material. So a couple other things of note on this project. I referenced that maintenance building, that's not included in this. That would be done as its own separate standalone project, but we would bring the sewer and water over to that. Likewise, turf restoration on this project, we've had good success in the past of building the baseball fields Uh, likewise, turf restoration on this project, we've had good success in the past of building the baseball fields, uh, through the competitive bidding process, but then on a sidebar, going out and getting quotes from specific landscaping contractors to, to do the turf restoration. So, uh, that would be the plan with this project as well. Um, this project does not include any lighting, uh, for the baseball fields. Estimated cost of this project, construction cost for the base bid's about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, rough, rough schedule, just to walk through that with you, we'd, if the council moves forward tonight, we'd have a bid opening, uh, probably mid to late August, get that awarded, so we're looking at a construction start of roughly September. Um, if all goes well, I think we could get it constructed. Uh, the one thing I think is we'd have to probably, at best case scenario, dormant seat it this fall um, and then likely touch it up with some extra overseeding in the spring. Usually dormant seating comes in a little bit patchy, so we'd almost planned to overseed in certain spots, but, uh, allowing that grass some time to grow and establish itself, we're probably looking at not being able to use these two baseball fields until late summer next, you know, twenty nineteen, so. Uh, with that, I'd, I'd answer any questions you might have on the project.
My only, my only thought and, and, or concern is the scoreboards, when, when those score, scoreboards are gonna have advertisement on them and they're gonna also have advertisement on their face and on the back. Uh, so make sure that, looks to me the way these ballfields are gonna sit, one of those scoreboards probably will be on the first baseline and the other one will be on the third baseline, so don't put them both on the first baseline because one of them will have their advertisement sitting out looking at the Sock River and the ducks don't really need to see that.
Gotcha.
Make sure that those, make sure that those scoreboards are facing Third Street, the back, so.
Is there a home run fence on this, around these?
Uh, there is, they're, they're two-hundred-foot dimension fields, home plate to the outfield and the fence is three hundred and sixty degrees around the field.
Is that galvanized or is that gonna be, uh, black?
Uh, it's, uh, galvanized.
It is, okay.
Now, this is gonna be put off for a regular bid, other than?
Correct.
This should've been bid, uh, two and a half months ago at the proper way.
Correct, this is the, kinda the first step in the, the more conventional bidding process that, that we're used to.
Alright, so we're about three months behind?
We're right on schedule.
Oh, we're behind.
Exactly when it was supposed to be bid and it's exactly what you wanted to do, Mike.
Oh, I didn't wanna do it this way, so don't even go there.
Wanted to go off for bid, so now we did it.
We're, we're off for bids, no, yeah, three months late.
Exactly what we should've done to start with and we did.
There's no timeline, Mike, we're not late.
We're not late because we couldn't be working on them anyway.
This thing could be constructed next year, who cares?
No, ho, no, 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 no. No, that I disagree, that I disagree.
Don't go there, Frank, 'cause I'll tell ya.
I know a guy that's got money coming for this.
There's a timeline here.
This is gonna be built this year.
See?
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. That's all we got? Huh, I don't have anything.
Bills at the end?
Yeah, I don't have anything, bills, yeah.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Sean, have you got anything?
Just a couple of things, um, that I'm looking at, uh, dates. Next, uh, council meeting will be August sixth. Um, we are looking at a budget works session coming up, a couple of dates, just to keep in mind. If you can let me know if the work for you would be August twenty-second, um, or August twenty-seventh.
Email them to us, will you?
Yep, I will.
Alright.
And then, um, next week, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference is coming up, July twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. We do have, uh, Chuck and Mike and Frank and myself that will be attending that. And then, uh, I think the next council meeting in September will be September tenth and I'll give you some of those dates in an email, but just wanted to give you kind of a heads up on those.
What about council meeting in August?
Yeah, that's a six.
August sixth.
August sixth.
And then we would be, if we needed to do a second one, we would try to tie that in with our budget work session whenever that is.
I won't be at the September tenth one.
Okay.
We'll get it done then.
Alright, anything else, council?
Nope.
Nope.
Terry? Bill? John had his two cents worth. Chief?
We're good.
Gordon? Carla?
Oh.
Alright, we are adjourned at, oh, I gotta get this right, seven oh four.